Long this town of Lunenburg.
Yeah, the recording is paused.
You have to unpause it.
Oh, I will, will me, always.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, July 17th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to move right into our interviews for interim Town Manager, and our first interview is going to be with Charlie Blanchard. So I'll invite you up. You can sit there at that seat right there. You'll just have to turn the microphone on. There should be a button on it and it'll light up green. All right. So just to go over the format, and thank you, by the way, for coming in. Welcome to Lunenburg. And I just want to say, I can't imagine what it's like to have a public job interview. So you already get major props from me on that. So for the format, we'll start with introductions. So the Board will just briefly introduce ourselves, and then we'll also give you an opportunity to introduce yourself and talk to your experience a little bit.
Great.
So obviously, I'm Caesar. I've been on this Board for about a year now. Prior to that, I was on the Finance Committee. And outside of town-related stuff, I'm a software engineer and I'm in the National Guard.
Very good.
My name is Mike Ray Jeffries, Vice Chair of the Select Board. I've been on the Board now for five years and spent two years serving as Chair and two years serving as Vice Chair. Outside of here, I am a Vice President of Asset Management. I'm also retired from the Army as a military police officer. And previous to this role, I served on the Planning Board in town and on, for one year, and on the Charter Review Committee for about a year as well.
Very good, thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Moore. This is my first year, so I'm only a couple of months, or a couple of meetings, a month and a half in. Previously, I worked for the town for 12 years. I moved recently over to the town of Concord. And outside of here, I, like I just said, I work for the town of Concord, but I've got three kids that are in the school system, so I'm very actively involved in various parts of the town.
Great.
I'm Tom Alonso. I've been on the Board for 17 years, two years on the Finance Committee before that. Too many committees and commissions to name in between those. And day job is in IT.
Very good, thank you.
My name's Renee Amke. I'm in my second year now on the Select Board. I'm also on the Stormwater Task Force and a newly formed Budget Task Force. Outside of here, I work full-time. I'm a biochemist, used to do pharmaceutical research, and now I'm on the software side.
Very good, thank you very much. Well, thank you, I'm very pleased to be here. I really appreciate the opportunity. It's really a pleasure to meet you. Well, I've watched several of your meetings, so I kind of feel like maybe I know you a little bit, at least watching some of the events, so that's good. So, you know, obviously, you have my resume, and I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you might have. But first, I would like to take a few minutes to highlight some of the things from my career. I have over 40 years of municipal management experience, 30 years as an elected official. There were 12 in the water, Sue Commission in Sturbridge, and 18 on the Board of Selectmen, and 16 as a Town Manager or Town Administrator. And of course, over these years, I've dealt with almost all of the same issues that you're dealing with here in Lunenburg that you face today. I have read your Town Manager's FY23 Annual Report. I've watched several of your Board meetings, as I mentioned, and I feel confidently that I have the knowledge and the experience to work with you and the town staff to continue to make progress in those areas. And because that's the critical thing, I think, during this transition period. My first full-time municipal management position as the first Town Manager in Paxton came really kind of rather late in my career. I was almost 60, which is why I have the same commitment and passion for this job as I did on the first day that I went to work in Paxton 19 years ago. My longest service as Town Manager was in Palmer. It's a community about the same size, at least population-wise, as Lunenburg, but it's a bit different as far as their commercial and industrial tax bases, a much, you know, much more, you know, tax revenues available there. And it's also a little different form of government, too. That was one where it's truly a city form of government, where you have a Town Manager, Town Council, where the Town Manager really does all the functions of the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Council is in effect the Town Meeting. It's, the nice thing about it is you can, you know, get those kind of legislative decisions made at a regular council meeting, so. So just a few more thoughts. My belief is that to be an effective Town Manager, you must develop a strong relationship with elected officials that you report to, have a transparent relationship, you know, keep them informed, and have a clear understanding of your priorities and goals and the direction that you want for the town. It's very, very important to get to know the department managers and staff so that you can provide the support, direction, and motivation they need to do their jobs well. And of course, that's even more important during a transition period like this, because certainly as they're facing, looking at a new Town Manager, you know, a lot of questions come up, and you need somebody that can be there to provide the information, provide the answers, and give them the support they need to do their jobs well. I think it's important to have a sense of humor, create an atmosphere where people enjoy coming to work. And of course, another big thing, I think, is to get to know the community, let the residents and businesses, owners, know that the door is open, and you listen to any concerns and get back to them with answers. So with that, just kind of a brief introduction of my background and philosophy.
All right, thank you, Charlie. So I'll move into a series of basic experience and qualifications-related questions.
Sure.
So first up is your availability. What would your availability be like? How many hours a week and what days of the week would you be willing to come into the office or even work remotely?
Okay, so that's a really good question. I think it's really important now, because I have watched your meeting, and I guess there's some, you know, discussion here about whether there should be a full-time or a part-time, you know, position. You know, basically, you're probably aware that municipal retirees are limited in what they can, hours they can work for another municipality and earnings they can make. And so that's one of the things I have to focus on, as to how much I can really earn in the course of a year. That said, the first job that I took after I retired from Palmer as an interim was in Williamstown. And Williamstown, of course, is two hours away from Sturbridge, so that was a big thing. It was sort of the end of COVID, so there was a lot of remote stuff. But basically, the decision that the Select Board made at that time was that they felt that 20, 24 hours a week would cover that. And so because of the distance, I really was only out there one day a week, and the rest of it was remote. And one of the things about this, even though we might call it a part-time job, we know that this is really a 24/7 job. If you're the Town Manager or Town Administrator in the town, you have to be there whenever anything comes up. I mean, it's night, day, weekends, emergencies, you know, police chief calls you about something you want to relay to the Board, you have to be there. So that said, there has to be a limited, you know, amount of the hours that I can actually be paid for, work for, and, you know, function. So that worked out very well. They had a search going on. They were kind of slow getting it started, so it extended out. They didn't hire the first people they went through. So I actually extended my time there. At that time, it became, at the time of the year, where was the budget starting? So I increased the hours to 30 hours a week, and went out there two days a week. In, in Southbridge, where I was last year, it was the same kind of a thing. We did it at 24 hours a week. And I was there trying to be there two days a week, and the rest would be, you know, remote or as needed. I mean, it's, you know, it's the next town over from Sturbridge, so it was a lot easier, you know, to get to. So basically, as I mentioned, that, you know, the job is what it takes. And so, for example, in, in Southbridge, I was being, you know, compensated for the 24 hours, but I actually averaged about 32 hours there a week between the things that needed to be done. And a lot more than that during the budget season, because the Town Finance Director had left right after I got there. The Town Manager obviously left when I came into the interim. So I just spent a lot of time, nights and weekends, you know, getting budgets together and working on that, you know, which is fine, you know. So my idea for here would be, it would be two days a week here, and the rest would be remote.
Do you have a preference for which days that you would want to be here in the office?
Well, I do. And you have a four-day work week here, I guess, for the Town Hall. So I mean, to me, the most efficient time would be Mondays and Wednesdays. I mean, certainly, that might have to change for different things. But that way, you're here at the beginning of the week to get things started, you can communicate with people, you're available to talk to them, you know, the rest of the days, and then Wednesday, you're following up. So that would be my, my preference, although I do have some other commitments coming up for things that I've made, like trips and so forth, so they may have to adjust that. And the other thing I noticed is, of course, your meetings are on Tuesdays, which my ideal thing for that would be to handle those remotely as much as possible. Because, you know, even if Tuesday was made one of the work days, the problem you have there is, you know, the Town Hall closes at 5:00, so you've got two hours to wait, you can do other things, but you're not in contact with the staff and people that might need you for the limited number of hours you are going to be able to commit to the community. And then you have the two or three hours, you know, at the meetings here. And so while I could come out to some, I would prefer to have, you know, that coverage of your meetings, and if I had to, you know, communicate with the Finance Committee and so forth, you know, also done remotely.
All right, thank you.
Plus, the other thing is, I'm in a golf league on Tuesdays, and Tuesday-
You're sorry, what? What do you-
Until the end of September, we're going to be tied up.
Oh, okay. Nice, that sounds fun. All right, thank you. So this appointment could be for up to six months. Would you be available to work until December or January?
I would. And that's another thing. In other words, the, the compensation that I would, you know, feel is fair, and we could certainly negotiate, I would make sure that I have time to, you know, continue to work after that, so I don't cap out. Of course, in December, it's got over again anyway, but yes. I anticipate that, you know, three months would probably be very good for everyone if you get a good candidate that quickly. But my experience and experience I saw in Southbridge, and also more recently, I, you 'd be lucky if you can get it done in three months. So I'm looking more toward, it'll probably be six months, and I would be available, yeah.
Cool. Can you tell us about any training or experience that you've had with Munis or ClearGov?
Well, I've used, I've used Munis. I, I'm not a great fan of it, but in other words, I can function with it. I can get the reports, and I certainly rely on the Finance Director, the Accountant, so forth, for giving the information. You know, my budget experience is, is pretty good. I've prepared a lot of budgets, and I do, you know, rely on the staff to get me the information that is required to get into that. So I have worked with those.
All right, cool. So that kind of leads into my next question. Can you talk about your experience preparing budgets and working with finance committees?
Yes. You know, obviously, in all my positions here, I've been responsible for preparing, you know, the budgets. And in Williamstown, you know, there was a Finance Committee that I, you know, the Finance Director and I prepared the budget and so forth, and went to the budget meetings and, and worked with them to explain the budget and go over the whole, you know, process. In Palmer, there was no Finance Committee. It's really just, you know, the Town, you know, Manager preventing the budget to the, to the Town Council, and they're approving it as they review it for the budget. So Southbridge, I think, is probably the one where, it's a pretty large budget, and unfortunately, there was really nobody left in the Town Hall that had ever worked on preparing the budget, even on the capital plan. The Finance Director who left just after I got there, and the DPW Director, who worked with her really closely on preparing the major capital budget, had left really the year before, and they hadn't had anyone to fill that position. So there was an awful lot of time that I had to do to just get into understanding what the background of the budget was, to make sure I could recreate it and make sure that everything was accurate in it. I mean, to further complicate the position there, the Accountant, who was actually, had been an Assistant Accountant and was promoted to Accountant before I left, had really only been there for about a year under the Finance Director, who was also the Accountant and left. And so I really had to spend a lot of time and effort on preparing that budget. We did get it done, we got it through, got it passed, and so forth. So I have a good budget experience.
Thank you. What experience do you have preparing for and presenting at Town Meeting?
Well, of course, let's see. The, of course, in Paxton, you know, they have a Town Meeting budget, so clearly, every, you know, every Town Meeting while I was there, you know, I prepared, helped prepare the warrant, and the Board primarily made presentations, you know, when articles came up, but I was there certainly to support any information they needed. And in Palmer, there was no Town Meeting, so we didn't have to do that. When I was in Williamstown, I did go through two, two Town Meetings and, you know, worked again to support the Board of Selectmen's presentation on that, right?
All right, thank you. One more question. When is your earliest start date?
Well, actually, I looked at that, because I saw that Heather is leaving on the 4th. I could be here on the 5th to, you know, get swan in and get all the detail, but then I have a couple of day trip, so it would probably be the next week that I'd be able to come in and start right there.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that's it for my question, so I'll hand it over to members of the Board, and we can start with Selectmen Amke.
I'm writing notes, sorry. So you mentioned that you looked at the Town Manager Annual Report and watched some recordings of our meetings. So based on, on what you've learned of Lunenburg, what would you say are, would be your priorities when, as you start as an interim Town Manager?
Well, I, I think the first priority would be to get to meet with all the department heads and the staff and find out, you know, what issues they have, you know, what they're working on, what they need to do. I, I think that, you know, particularly for an interim Town Manager, you have to be a resource, you have to be there to support, you know, their work and find out if there are things that you can answer, answers you can give them to get things moving. So that would certainly be probably the first thing that I'd want to do. The, you know, during this period, I'm sure there'll be, you know, you know, concern as to the fact that, you know, what's going to happen with the next Town, you know, Manager and so forth. And you want to be there to provide some consistency and, you know, some support to keep things operating the, the way that they are, really.
So kind of a follow-up to that, you've done both the permanent Town Manager, Town Administrator role, but also several interim positions. Can you talk about the differ, like the importance or some of the qualities that are important in an interim that may be more, more important for an interim than a permanent Town Manager? And, and how you would-
Well, I, I think a, a big part of it is be able to communicate, be able to, you know, get people to, you know, trust you and to realize that, you know, they're there to support their activities and help them get their job done, and just develop a good relationship where they feel that their work is being appreciated, that you understand, you know, the requirements they have or the different responsibilities they have, deadlines they have to meet, and kind of work as an interface between them and also, you know, to the, the Select Board, to make sure that the things that you're concerned about, the goals, the, the issues that you want to have addressed are prioritized and explained to them so that it can become part of their workload itself.
Okay. And can you compare and contrast what you know of Lunenburg with some of the previous towns that you've worked in?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Can you compare and contrast Lunenburg, as far as you know, what you know about Lunenburg, to some of the, the aspects of the previous towns you've worked in? In terms of, you mentioned Town Council versus Select Board, Open Meeting.
Well, in other words, you know, one of the things, obviously, you know, we had a successful override, you know, recently. When I was in Paxton, most recently, for the maternity leave for the Town Administrator there, they were faced with the same issue. And so it was clear in the budget that the Town Administrator had presented, or at least worked on and didn't, you know, get to finish before she went on maternity leave, that it was needed. So I went forward and I provided the kind of information the Board needed to make that decision to decide to move forward with that. So, you know, there's certainly a, a great similarity between that whole function and what I saw in Paxton and what I've seen in other, you know, communities where we did have a Town, you know, Meeting and so forth. I mean, everyone's kind of facing the same kind of issues this time with, you know, finding qualified people to do the jobs, to retain employees, to keep employee morale up. And so I think it's important to, you know, be aware of those things, particularly during this interim period, and be there to be, you know, the person who can, you know, work with the, the staff to understand that, you know, the ship is keep moving along and everything's going to go in the right direction and things are going to get done.
How, how big was the override in Paxton?
I'm sorry, what?
How big was the override in Paxton?
Well, it didn't pass. The actual amount that I really recommended was 1.8 million, and the Select Board, you know, reviewed it, and they decided they would try to go with a 1.4 million override. Unfortunately, what happened was that the Finance Committee didn't agree with that, and so there wasn't really a cohesive message to the community that both the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, and the Finance Committee were on board with that. So that vote unfortunately failed. So they, this, this, the vote actually happened after I left, I mean, when Heather, you know, came back, Heather, the, who was also the Town Administrator there. And so they, they proposed an 800,000 in that field as well. So there was no override, and so now they're faced with the idea of really making the cuts in, primarily the cuts in service that they'll have.
Okay. Can you talk about how you've had to deal with any turnover of staff and how the hiring, recruiting, and so on? Your experience with, with dealing with that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's something the communities are facing, you know, really all around. I mean, you know, there aren't a lot of people that want to get into municipal government and a lot of times, in municipal jobs. When I went into Palmer as the interim before I ultimately became the Town Manager there for several years, they had had two major positions that were open. The Town Accountant had resigned just after I got there, and the DPW Director had resigned, had retired. And even though I was in an interim position, the Town Council did want to have that filled. So, I mean, I did the advertising, you know, I reached out, we did the interviewing, and I did fill those positions. So, I mean, I, I have been very active in hiring people and, and interviewing and, and getting them, you know, on board. Most recently, while I was in Southbridge, you know, I, I did support the work of the Search Committee, you know, quite a bit, when they were looking for a new Town Manager there. And so, and, and really, the same thing happened when I was in Williamstown, where they relied on at least my experience and knowledge of people within, you know, the state that would be interested in becoming, you know, the Town Manager out there. So, yeah, I've worked on that sort of a effort. So, I mean, I am aware of the challenges in hiring, you know, good people for municipal jobs, but I certainly have been involved in it.
And can you comment on, on retention of employees?
Well, I think, you know, if people feel that they're appreciated, if, if they feel that people understand the work they're doing, and, you know, that helps retain employees. I mean, certainly, wages are, you know, something that people are really concerned about, but usually, it's more just the fact that they understand that the people in the Town Hall, the Board of Selectmen, understand what they're doing and appreciate the work they do. I mean, a, a lot of it is having a workforce that, you know, feels that they have the ability to get their job done and they're not being challenged by it. When I, when I went to Williamstown, one of the big problems there, and I kind of highlighted a little bit in the resume, I don't know if you noticed it, but what had happened there was that there was a, a sergeant who was sort of disgruntled, and he actually raised first an MCAT complaint, and then ultimately, when he felt he was passed over for a Lieutenant's position, he sued the Town. And, you know, people really got upset about that. And what happened was, there were a lot of things going on where people began to really criticize the operation of the Police Department, and it sort of carried over into, you know, the Town Employees. So all of a sudden, you know, you have the COVID issue, you have this big issue here where the Town, you know, Manager resigns, the Police Chief had to resign, or didn't have to, but he did resign. And so you have all that turmoil, and, and one of the things I was able to do when I was there was to, you know, work with the, the staff to let them know that they were appreciated, that, that there were good things going on there. When we, you know, had Select Board meetings, we'd have reports about what they were doing. In other words, I would have, you know, monthly staff meetings, and we'd put the minutes together and get them to the Board of Selectmen so that they'd understand the day-to-day stuff that goes on. I mean, one of the problems, it was really highlighted out there, was that the Board was so focused on the external stuff, the criticism the Police Department was getting, the ideas that, you know, there was diversity issues and so forth and problems there, that they weren't getting the understanding of what was going on on a day-to-day basis, you know, to keep the roads plowed, to keep everything happening the way to be, to dealing with the, you know, the DPW issues. So it was important to keep talking about and letting people just see these things that are being done, and that, you know, I, I think it really helped the morale all along, that, that people realized that they were appreciated and that, you know, there was a light on the end of the tunnel that, they'd move on, and I think they have moved on.
Can I time up?
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I just have a few questions. So the first one is, what would you define as a successful tenure for an interim Town Manager? And seeing as how you've had several such roles, how did you achieve that suc, did you achieve that success and how?
Well, I did. I, I feel I did. I mean, one of the, again, we'll get back to Williamstown, because that was probably the one situation that was the most departed from the way it should have been. I mean, between the morale issue, the fact that the police were, you know, getting a lot of criticism. And one of the things that I finally did there, well, it's kind of a long story as far as what actually happened. That particular sergeant who had raised the issue had also been charged with some, some actions that the Board didn't think were right. So they put him on a paid leave. So now we had a situation where we have an interim chief, and they wanted to have, well, they had, had an acting chief, they wanted me to appoint an interim chief. So I went through that whole thing, I reviewed, you know, the activity that the acting chief had done. I, I worked with a, they had a Town Search Committee to try to find an interim chief, and I made the decision to keep the acting chief on as interim, and because I really felt he was doing the right thing, he had all the qualifications, and, and things were really heading in the right direction. So then, what happened was, the Board had hired an outside attorney to investigate all these charges, and then in turn, you know, she hired an investigator who had access to police records to do the same kind of a thing. So basically, after that whole thing ended, the summer I was there, we were faced with this report, which really didn't find a lot of things, and we were faced with the idea of what are we going to do with the sergeant? Are we going to bring him back? What will happen if we do that? And, you know, we went first, I first went with the Town Council we had, and they said, "Well, you know, this is a situation where there isn't much you can do, you're going to have to bring him back." So instead, what I did is I contacted an attorney, a labor attorney that I'm familiar with, you probably know D. Moss, because you're familiar with D., I think, from many things. And D. looked- at this?" We brought it forward and realized, he realized that we could do a civil service action on this, you know, fellow having an investigation. We ultimately did that, and, you know, the settlement was made that the fellow resigned. And I think it really helped the community get back on track to put this all behind them and move forward. And right now, the situation is that, you know, the chief that I appointed is the permanent chief now of the new town, permanent town administrator, or town manager that came and hired him as, you know, to be the final chief. And they're in the process of getting a certified department. So I think that was a big step to be able to, you know, work to solve that in a way I think, in a way I think that was fair to everybody, but most fair, I think, to the people and the staff that were there.
Thank you. If I swap roles, because you've been, you said you were a Board of Selectmen member as well?
Yes.
So, this question is kind of, is asked from both sides of your experience. So what do you believe are the most important qualities one must possess to become an effective interim town manager? And which qualities are those that we as a select board, we'd want to avoid in any potential candidate?
I'm not sure what kind of quality you'd want to avoid, but I think, you know, somebody who understands municipal government, understands the way, you know, towns work. Somebody that can communicate, somebody that feels, you know, that will gain people's trust in understanding what they're doing, what they're working on. Again, I get back to the idea that, you know, the interim is really trying to keep things moving along in a positive direction and not veering off, not having things, you know, go into an area that isn't going to be very productive. So, I think the qualifications that you'd need for that are the same way in any kind of a management. You have to be able to work with people, you have to understand what their needs are, you have to understand, really, just how to keep things getting accomplished. I mean, to help people get their jobs done and do the things you need to do.
And which ones would be ones to avoid?
I'm not sure.
Besides saying lack of all those other ones?
I mean, I'm not sure what you mean by equality to avoid.
Well, personal qualities in ways that people work. I mean, you've probably been in the workforce long enough to know what qualities people have or don't have that make them effective at what they do and not effective at what they do.
Well, I mean, wouldn't equality always be a positive thing?
Uh, no. People have bad qualities.
I may be a misunderstanding that. I mean, you know, you don't want the people who are dishonest, you don't want the people who don't want to work hard. I mean, you know, those are the kind of things I think you want to be careful of.
Okay. You're not going to be in this job for a long time without getting people criticizing what you've done. I'm sure you've had your share.
I have.
So, what would your critics say are your weaknesses, and how would you respond or have you responded to them? And what would you, what would you say for yourself your weaknesses are?
Well, let's see. I, well, I'm not sure, well, I'm trying to think of one situation where I mentioned in Williamstown that I'd been involved with the idea that the town manager there had decided that he would have a citizen's search committee help with the appointment of, say, the interim chief. And somehow they got the idea that it was going to be their decision. And, you know, the charter is, you know, pretty clear that the town manager has to appoint this interim. And actually, in Williamstown, it's even a stronger town manager position because those positions don't get, required to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So it really is a strong town manager position. Anyway, to make a long story short, they went through a whole thing, they had some interviews, and I got involved. And they brought some candidates forward, and I was not happy with the candidates. As I mentioned, I moved forward and went ahead with the acting chief. So obviously, I had to try to address, you know, this group. And this group was very involved with a lot of ideas. And so I tried to address, you know, the best way I could, what my view was and respecting what their decision was, but make it clear to them that they were not going to be the ones that chose this, that I would be the one to make a decision, and I would give them the reasons why. And I guess one of the qualities that maybe isn't a good quality, you know, I try to be friendly, I try to be listening to people, but some of them got the idea that I was kind of laughing at them when I smiled. And so, you know, I guess I need to be more careful in how I present myself to people to make them understand that I really am listening to them, I really am considering what they have to say, and make sure that, you know, almost everything you do does come under scrutiny. So it's very important to, you know, try to, you know, do the best you can to, you know, keep everyone understanding what you're really talking about.
Just in all fairness, what would you say your strengths are?
Well, I think my strengths are that, you know, I research issues, you know, my education is an engineer. And, you know, the strength of that, I think, is to learn how to solve problems, to really dig into things and, you know, get solutions. So, I think my strength is that I look into things, I study things, I try to look at both sides of the story, you know, and make the decision that's best that I can.
And one final question. This position, before it was renamed Town Manager, used to be called Chief Administrative and Financial Officer because obviously there's a clear division between administrative and financial.
Right.
Which would you say you're stronger in, the financial side of things or the administrative side of things?
Well, I would say they're really, you know, kind of balanced. I mean, I do, I think I have a good understanding and a good, you know, financial background, but, I mean, I don't want to be, for example, a financial manager. I want to be able to rely on somebody who is really going to be the financial manager. So, I would say that my strength is, you know, the administration or the management above that, to be able to take those pieces together and, you know, produce what's needed as far as, you know, the solution to the issue.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. I think we're running a little short on time, so I have two, based on how far we've gone in this. You've given some really great answers.
Sure.
But first, I'm sure with your experience, you've dealt with residents that are unhappy. I think that happens in every community. But can you talk about a situation or how you would handle a resident that is unhappy, especially if they have been given an answer to their complaint and they don't like the answer that they've been given?
Well, I think the most important thing you do is listen to them. And, you know, make sure they understand that you do understand what they're saying. If there's a question that, you have any doubts at all about whether it was handled properly, you have to be able to research it, you know, talk to the department head or whatever the staff member was or, you know, that occurred to be the problem. And, you know, if there is an issue, you try to deal with it. I mean, probably the place that I saw it most was things that have to do with people. You've probably seen the same thing. I know you have a lot of the issues with our Lake thing with the assessor thing. But, I mean, that was one area where people would come to me and complain about what the assessor told them and so forth and so forth. So I'd have to really talk to the assessor about what really happened. And if, if everything was right and everything was done the best way, I'd try to get them together and sit down and say, okay, look, you know, I understand your concern about this, but here are the facts, and this is what we try to do. I mean, you try to just, you know, make sure you understand totally what's happening and get the facts and let, you know, the resident know the facts. And, I mean, you can't always make them happy, you know, with what the facts are. But if everything's been done right and that's what should have been done, there isn't much more you can do about it other than, you know, let them know that you took it seriously and you did all the research on it that you could.
Great. I have one more. We do at least have one current open contract. Can you talk about any experience that you've had with labor relations and negotiations with contracts and unions?
Yes. I have negotiated several union contracts. I think, I don't know if I mentioned in my resume, I thought I did, that while I was still interim in Williamstown, they had had a situation where they were really only doing annual contracts with the DPW and with the, with the police department. And, you know, because of, I think, the confidence they had in the way I dealt with, you know, the issue that came up from all that whole thing with the lawsuit and so forth, that they felt they wanted to work with me to negotiate a contract. We negotiated the first three-year contract that they had had in quite a while. The DPW didn't work out quite that well, they waited too long, and they really didn't want to do it. But I have had experience, I do work with contracts and deals with union contracts.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for being here. Can you talk to me about your human resources experience, specifically as it relates to hiring, onboarding, team building, and culture?
Okay. Well, in my first position in Paxton, it was really, there's no HR department or anything like that. So, in other words, as part of the role of an administrator, you know, you do that stuff. I mean, you do the advertising, you try to work with people. And obviously, that was a while ago, and things have really progressed a lot more in that area. In Palmer, you know, I'm sorry, not in Palmer, in Southbridge, we did have an HR director. And, you know, I worked with her as far as, you know, supporting efforts and filling the staff positions and trying to work on policy issues. And so, you know, I'm aware of the importance of that. And I just really have, yeah, I think I've worked well with, you know, filling these positions and really doing the HR function.
That's...
Okay. And if selected, you're not going to be a subject commander expert in the departments that you will manage. But your department heads are subject commander experts who know a lot more than you about their departments.
They do.
So, please share your approach to managing department heads and whether you have employed a command team approach.
Well, I don't know if I'd really call it a command team. You know, it's certainly a team of staff members that gets together to understand what everyone's doing and working on it. There isn't any question about the fact that, I mean, you know, I'm not the police chief, I'm not the fire chief. I mean, I understand that these people are here, they're the experts, and they want to get their job done. My role as a town manager is to provide anything they need for support to do that. And so I think that's, you know, the biggest thing that you really can do in that whole area of it. You know, one of the things I've always said is that, you know, the town manager job is probably the easiest in the world as long as you have good staff people who enjoy the job, know their job, and want to do their job. And most of the time in my entire career, that's the way I found people to be. And so, if you can be there to support them, to provide any information that they might need, you know, that's out of their wheelhouse, that is more involved in the management side or dealing with whatever the policies are with the Board of Selectmen, then that's something you can do to provide their support. But certainly, you want to provide the support they need to do the jobs that they're capable and trained to do.
All right. And then I just have a follow-up to a question that I was asked earlier by the chair. We had previously discussed that, you know, we were open to the idea of there being overlap between the interim town manager and the existing town manager. You indicated that you'd be available on August the 5th, which would be the Monday following
Oh, right.
the town manager departure. But are you also open to having a start date prior to then to overlap with the current?
Yeah, there's no question. I, you know, I could do that. I mean, I do think there should be some overlap, you know, before the town manager leaves, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't. I mean, I guess the one thing, you know, I did get the impression in, actually in watching last night's meeting, that there is a feeling that this needs to be a full-time position. Is that still, you know, the idea or the interim?
I think that's probably a point of discussion, so just open it up to anyone on the board who wants to share.
I would say from my perspective, I think that the hours, I appreciate the distance that you'll be coming, and I can certainly appreciate the fact that it's, again, our meetings are late, so doing our select board meetings at night, I don't have a problem with. But as long as, I mean, two days is probably good, you know, but I would say as far as per week, you're probably looking at 30 at least. That's what I would say, 30. But, I mean, they don't have to be here. And if you're flexible, as one member of the board, I'll be flexible. And with your experience and what you just said tonight, you know that if something comes up unbeknown, you know, that's out of left field that we never couldn't foresee, you know that there are times when you need to be here. If we leave that open, I'm fine with that starting point.
Yeah, no, and that was really the point I tried to make, that even though, for example, say in Southbridge, that it was normally 24, the way I think this should be, I mean, this isn't an hourly job. In other words, it really should be a salary position. So, you know, what I had done there and what I had done, you know, in Southbridge and also in Williamstown, was to look at the number of hours that they wanted to have committed, say the 24 hours. In Paxton, it was only 20. But regardless, you take that, you take a fair hourly rate, and that becomes the weekly salary. And then, based on that, the understanding certainly is that although the concept might be like 16 hours, you know, here, present in town, you know it's going to take longer than that when you're here, and the other eight remote, if it takes more than that, it'll happen. It does happen. As I mentioned, I don't know if I had mentioned it or not, but I do know that, like, when I was in Paxton, most recently, it was 20 hours, but I really did average, and I keep track of all the time, whether it's a call, whether I'm writing something, whether I'm working on something. It would average really 27 hours. And again, in Southbridge, it was much more than that. I mean, it averaged something like 34 hours, I believe. And there was sometimes, it was a lot more than that when I had to, you know, be under the gun to prepare the budget and get it in by a certain time. So, it's really not the distance, it certainly weighs into it somewhat. But in other words, Southbridge is only five minutes away from my home, and it still worked that way. In other words, it was really, you know, the 24 hours, you know, basically committed, the other, you know, time, you know, remotely, and whatever time it takes really to get the work done.
And Mr. Chair, if I may offer and also offer to the applicant, my position, and it's a little bigger than probably the question you're asking, but I don't think that we have a realistic picture of the job that we've created in the charter for the town manager and how long it actually takes to do it. So I am really open and interested in getting feedback from an interim town manager, because I think that as we move forward, that we need to kind of restructure expectations. And so I'm interested in interim providing us with that information that says to us, knowing that our existing town manager has consistently worked, you know, 60-plus hours a week, and that is not sustainable or okay with me, I would like to know what can actually be achieved in a normal work week and what we need more, where the areas are that we need to provide more support. So I think that, you know, for me, if you're only available on a part-time basis, I do think that that would help give a realistic picture of where support is needed at. You know, you'll know immediately, based on picking up the workflow, of how heavy it is, how hard it is, and what change does need to be made. And so I'm interested in that, so there's no conflict from my part on, you know, the hours of roughly 25, 30 hours a week.
Good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I think that's it.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming in tonight, Charlie.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you, you too.
Drive safely and try to stay out of the thunderstorm.
Yes, I will. Thanks.
There's a lot of nice restaurants in the area.
All right. Thank you. Take good night now. Thank you.
Have a good night. So, Selectmen Mkey is just going to go and see if our next candidate is outside already, and if so, we can start a little early. All right, I'm told he is.
Hey, how are you?
And then, in the last, like, 10 minutes or so, we'll give you the opportunity to ask questions.
Sure.
Sound good? All right. Well, looks like we're all here, so we can just get started. My name's Caesar. I've been on the board for a year. This is my second year now. Outside of town-related stuff, I'm a software engineer, and I'm also in the National Guard. And before I was on the Select Board, I was on the Finance Committee.
All right. I'm Michael Ray Jeffries. I've served on the Select Board for five years now, two of them as the chair and two as the vice chair. And outside of here, I manage property. I work for, I don't say who I work for publicly anymore, but outside of here, I manage property. I'm a vice president. I've previously served on the Planning Board for a year and the Charter Review Committee for a year, and I'm retired from the Army.
Hi, my name's Amanda Moore. This is my first year on the board, so I've only been on for a couple of weeks. I did work for the town for 12 years. I just accepted a position in the town of Concord. And I have three kids, two of which are still in the school system. So, I'm also actively involved in the community in that way.
I'm Tom Alonso. I've been on the board, this is the beginning of my 18th year, and two years before that on the Finance Committee and a host of other committees along the way. On my private sector job, I work at IT.
I'm Renee Emke, currently in my second year on the Select Board and also on Stormwater Task Force and Budget Task Force. And I work full-time. My training is as a biochemist, and I was in pharmaceutical research and now on the software side.
If you want to just introduce yourself?
Sure. You have my resume, so I'm not going to, you know, bore you with details, trying to give you all color about who I am and how I came to be, what that is. I've always had a great interest in politics, starting in sixth grade, when I debated in our little elementary school on behalf of a presidential candidate, and I'll leave out which one in case you were on the other side at that point in time. We moved to the Berkshires. My dad was a social worker. We moved to the Berkshires, where I actually spent about 32, 35 years. First, came into government as an assistant to the mayor. The mayor resigned, and the city council president, under that charter, becomes acting mayor, and he asked me to come in with him to help him. I was lucky enough to have an employer who was willing to give me a one-year public service leave of absence, so I could try it out, awaiting the results of the fall election that was required under the city charter. Worked for about six years for the state of Massachusetts, now known as DCR. Then it was Department of Environmental Management, which jokingly referred to as "don't expect much." I've got some familiarity with this region on my trips from North Adams and Gardner through back and forth to Boston. I also worked on a project in Marlborough for the state. Heritage Parks were sort of, it was interesting, because it was Bears and Bunnies, Forest Rangers trying to do these things in the inner city. And I was hired because of my urban renewal economic development background. Did a bit of development on my own account, never planned on 91, when 150,000 people would leave the state, and crack cocaine would take over many of our inner cities. And then, found a way back into general management, which I really, really enjoy in the smaller communities. I'm not smart enough to be necessarily a specialist in any one specific area, other than perhaps finance. But I do know enough about construction, public safety, community and economic development and planning, to keep the consultants that we hire honest and to pose some questions to our own staff and to help develop them. Many of the department heads that you might speak with would say that they learned a lot in working with me, which is more of a tribute to their ability to absorb than my ability to transmit. You know, I retired about seven years ago, and I was surprised how quickly bored I became. It approached fall, the kayak was going to have to go up, so I first went with New Durham, New Hampshire. They were going through some political strife, and since then, I've helped a couple of other I actually managed Templeton and Grafton at the same time. For about five months, I had the two communities that I managed. Boxborough was perhaps the most difficult. They were going through quite a bit. They had an FBI investigation office of the inspector general. It's amazing how much paperwork and time those looksees can take. You know, and if I can assist you folks in some way for a few months, as you're in your search, I see that the search committee is meeting tonight, also perhaps finalizing your advert for the position. I'd certainly enjoy an opportunity to work with y'all.
All right. Thank you, Carter. So, a couple of questions. What is your availability like in terms of hours, stays that you would be able to come and work in person?
So, that has varied a little bit by each community, depending upon their needs. What I have done in the other communities tended to be about three days a week physically present, 24/7 telephone, and then, you know, some Zoom time and such, like on a Friday morning or such. At the time I was doing Boxborough, I was actually living in New York City, so I tend to get to Boxborough around 9:30 in the morning, usually the morning of a meeting night, and then leave around 3:00, 4:00 on that third day, depending upon what was going on. You know, but I need to meet your needs. You know, now, when could I start? Well, ink has to dry on a contract. But other than that, I'm pretty available. I do have some short-term commitments in September that I've committed to. I honestly, other than committing to going away for a few days in September, I can't even tell you what those days are right now, because I said to my partner, we'll have to wait and see what happens. But I think that you would find that I meet your needs in terms of hours. And one thing that I can tell you, if this goes a little bit longer than you'd hope, I heard three months the other night, six months frankly is a little bit more common, I don't leave you hanging. Boxborough, I was supposed to be there a year. It turned out I was there about 18 months. I was supposed to be in Templeton for four months. I was, four years and four months. I won't leave you hanging. We'll make sure that, you know, we get you through to a point. Town manager searches, there's not a lot of folks out there right now. And it may prove challenging. You may become extremely lucky. Who knows? Who knows? I know Lakeville, Bob Nunes just had to extend because their search isn't getting done in the first seven months. But I'm available as soon as you need. I'll work around what your needs are, and please feel comfortable that I would not leave you hanging.
Thank you. You answered two of my other questions, so let's see. Let me skip down. Can you tell us about any training or experience that you have with Munis or ClearGov?
I don't know, Ferga, at all, and I'm not an accountant. I mean, I will call the accounting office and ask them to print me a report, but I've got to be right straight up with you. You know, I have an MBA, I know how to read the reports, I talk with our auditor, I know how to pose the hard questions. We were under state oversight from the DLR in Templeton. They hadn't done an audit in over three years. We were four years in before we had an audit. And, you know, feel free to talk with Deb Wagner at the Department of Revenue, Tony Roselli at Roselli &amp; Clark. I'll keep a good track of the finances. My most immediate concerns in coming in are free cash certification, tax rates set in. I don't know what happened this year, and I don't want to cast dispersions on anyone, but you've got to get those tax bills out by December 28. You know, the tax certification I looked at was, I think, March of this year. I don't know exactly what happened, you know, in getting started on the budget. But no, making entries and everything else, and you don't want me in it. The accountant's over there. You know, that's their responsibility. One thing frankly I've never done is gotten into the accounting system or signed any of the bank accounts.
Thank you. What experience do you have preparing for and presenting at town meeting?
Well, I've been through, I think, 20-plus town meetings now. even mine. I've had approximately 15 overrides, debt exclusions, and capital exclusions passed and lost two. Won by 16 votes out of a couple thousand. So, yes, the 61 town employees who did not vote did hear from me. You know, so I mean, I try to put a lot of work, when I present the budget, it's a full picture and it's balanced. We work that through over a couple of months. I do talk of the town every month, you know. Now, this would be different here, because this is only an interim. For those of you who are fans of the British parliamentary system and love to watch the PM get pummeled, I do question time before the fall town meeting, before the annual town meeting, where I can find somebody that hopefully will really, you know, hold me to it in terms of explaining things. We do a pretty good pamphlet, I don't know what yours are, before the meetings. You can go back and look at Templeton's. Those are online, Spencer's are online. PowerPoint, I'm pretty good at. But generally, by the time we get to town meeting, I have been fortunate enough to work in communities which have not required real lengthy presentations at town meeting, because we're working all the way through, you know. It's like casting bread upon the water, if you will. There's an idea that goes out, then we come back, then we talk about it some more, then we build on it. You know, then maybe the finance committee works on it. When we went to Pageot, Throw, and Spencer, we had the finance committee first do a research and report on all other transfer stations in the area. So, you can't, you can't have the first time that an idea really comes up when you pull the sheets off the foam core and say to people, here it is. This is a building process. You've got to keep people informed, bring them along. Yes, there will be someone in the audience that says, "This is the first time I've ever heard of it," to which one of my Select Board members said, "Well, short of strapping a sandwich board on my back and walking up and down the streets, I don't know what else we could have done." I leave you with that.
All right. Thank you. And I have one more question. You already sort of talked about this a little bit in terms of finance, but can you talk about your experience preparing budgets and working with finance committees?
I can't even remember. Boy, I can't even tell you how many I've done now between Pittsfield and the others. Certainly 20-plus. They have, I believe they've all passed, generally close to unanimous. I have, for budgets I've prepared, I have never had to balance it in the fall. Because of the way that we estimated revenues and expenses, there were no surprises in the fall. When I walked into Spencer, the first thing I had to do in the fall was figure out how to close a $285,000 gap. It seemed pretty simple to me. They hadn't done a real great job of projecting expenses and revenues, and then the cherry sheet came in, which is released in January, February 2nd at the latest usually, and everybody seemed surprised. I think you would find that finances is one of my strengths. And again, working with finance committees, that's ranged from pretty good to pretty hard. When I got to one community, they were convinced that they needed to write the budget. It's not what the bylaw said, but they'd been allowed to do that for a number of years. And they were trying to use the reserve fund to essentially manage departments. They would try to screw the expenses down so tight that, well, you know, if they run out, they can come to us. If they run out, they can come to us. Well, if you screw the budget down so tight, you know they're going to have to come to you, I would suggest that really doesn't meet the statutory definition of unexpected or emergency. I think that for the most part, you know, feel free to talk with the chairman of the Grafton Finance Committee, John Kaplis. I think he's the chair of the Finance Committee in Templeton. Peter Durant, state senator for the north central west, I guess we'd call it, was chair of the Finance Committee. You'll get a hard report on me from the Finance Committee Chair in Boxborough.
All right. Thank you, Carter. Well, that's it for my questions, so I'll open it up to the board, starting with Selectmen Emke.
How long would you say it takes to complete a budget? From start to having a budget done? How many months?
Four months. So, the process usually starts, again, this is for an interim, and I don't know where you're going to be. My process normally starts in September with a board setting goals. You know, the budget is a lot more than a compilation of some numbers. The budget is the single biggest policy document y'all will adopt every single year. It is what services you're going to provide, how you're going to organize yourself to provide those services, and what kind of resources you're going to give to that organizational structure to carry out those goals, those services. So, I usually start in September with a goal setting. Usually by one November, we've issued guidance and a countdown, what I call a countdown to town meeting, which has every statutory deadline and everything. Budgets are normally due in right around New Year's. They always like that. I do remind them that if they get it in earlier, they don't have to work over Christmas and New Year's to get it done. Usually, it's the first meeting in February when I've released it. It takes some time, depends upon your historic data. You know, how good is that historic data? And where are you in your audit cycle? Is your free cash certified? But I usually work with about four months.
Based on what you know of Lunenburg and what's going on now, what's been going on, what are your priorities? You mentioned, you know, free cash, tax rate. What would your priorities be coming in day one as an interim town manager?
Well, first is to try to get my head around organizational structure, who I'd be working with, what the normal protocols are. But free cash certification, where are we? What can we do in terms of the tax rate? I would jokingly tell my staff that if they can get the first tax rate, they get steak and champagne at, you know, a restaurant of their choice. They've never made that, but they did do the first free cash one year. ARPA, I see you've got about $313,000. You know, that's got to be committed, as you know, by December 30. I had set up a plan in Boxborough which would have had it fully expended by then. They're not there. It is amazing to me, you're not alone in not getting your ARPA monies fully committed or expended. You may find at some point that the best thing to do is to go to your capital list and your state did list and issue that contract for whatever piece of equipment you think you need, because guess what? Even a police cruiser these days can take upwards of eight and nine months. It just blows my mind. So, meeting with the Finance Committee, meeting with your school superintendent, trying to understand the impact of your most recent override and the tenor of the town related to that. And... to that. And frankly, having this board set what their priorities are for me. I work for you. My job is to make sure you all look good and that I'm responsible for every mistake. I mean, that's kind of the compact that we have, and as long as we both remember that. So those would be my priorities in terms of getting set up, because I do think, you know, you're going to be more than three months.
Do I have time for one more?
Yeah, you have, yep.
Can you describe, how would you describe your management style when it comes to town employees and staff?
Part walking around, just dropping in. I think that, you know, picking up the phone and saying, "The department head, I need you in here." If you walk down to their office, I think shows them a matter of respect and courtesy. Part by mentoring. I think if you talked with, you know, some of my department heads, whether they be in Grafton, police chief, DPW director, or in Templeton, the development services director, or Spencer, my old fire chief, they would say that, you know, I try to do a lot of handholding, mentoring, and the Socratic method, you know, sort of asking enough questions hopefully until they have their own aha moment or explain why things need to be done. I meet with staff every morning after a board meeting, sort of, you know, rumor control. Tough to do now that everything's on TV in the moment, but it used to be, you know, I'd be getting to the department heads first. That's not so much anymore. But it also lays out where we're headed, questions that came up from you all. You know, Mr. Alonso had a question about this, DPW director. Can I get an answer in 10 days? Can you tell me what's going on? And then we can talk about where we're headed. And in some cases, although it's my name on the memo at the end, I remember walking one town through, okay, what are the revenues we can raise? What is it you think we can get past? What do you all support? I had one person who thought he should abstain from everything. And then at the end of the day, there are some times when you have to call somebody in and close the door and have a conversation. We have all made mistakes in our life. In my very first job, I messed something up, the mayor called me in the next morning. I said, "I screwed up, it'll never happen again." He said, "That's the only thing that could have saved your job this morning. Get out of here and get back to work." You know, I have the same attitude towards my department heads. Okay, stuff happens, especially if the department head comes in and tells me, "Boss, I issued a building permit I shouldn't have, because here's what happened." Okay, well, can we do this? Can we do that? Talk with the property owner. I think we can move this building just enough to make it work. But there are some times when you have to have unpleasant conversations, and I've had it terminate people. I try to do it in a manner which gives them the ability to recover. I give them an opportunity to resign first, a few months of severance, health insurance, provided they give us a release of all claims, of course. So it's a bit of a mixed bag. I'm not a micromanager, not a, except on press releases and memorandums. You know, if they're written something and it doesn't answer questions, I say, "Well, you know, if select board member Moore has this question, well, yeah, it's there. Yeah, it's on the eighth paragraph on page two. You buried the lead." It's not micromanagement, can provide you, more than happy to provide you with a list of folks I think would. Now, those who don't want to be part of a team, you can't tell me what to do, like my teenage daughter was. She's no longer a teenager. Those I don't get along with quite as well. But I have been very fortunate to have very few of those folks in my life, and I think most department heads would tell you they really enjoyed working with me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So how would you define a successful tenure for an interim town manager? And I see you've done this role several times. In those roles, would you say you achieved that and how?
I'm hopeful that when I leave, you will say to yourself, "We made a good decision, and I'm sorry to see him go." That's the best it can be. I have one community where I've done an interim, and I actually got a call of, you know, "Our TM might be leaving, would you be willing to come back?" I think that's success, but I can't define it any better than that. It's really very subjective in your minds.
Okay, would you say that your previous ones have been successful?
Three out of four.
Okay. And what made the, well, this is a good follow-up question then. So what made the three successful and what made the fourth one not?
Quite frankly, the three that I was most successful in, we were able to calm the political strife in New Durham. Spencer was in some real financial trouble. They had a brand-new charter that they'd just passed, and the department heads were hungry to have some order brought out of chaos. And the moderator's wife, who'd been on the search panel, the moderator, the fellow who wrote the special legislation, said that I had done all they'd hoped for and more. It was a team effort. Templeton was a team effort. I had a great select board. Boxborough, I keep being reminded by this monitor that there's sort of a public viewing of all of this. Boxborough was not as successful. It was a community. I like to see communities that are run on the basis of sound policy developed through clear public discussion and participation. Frankly, Boxborough was much more of a, who do you like best? And I had a board that was trying to turn that around. They were trying to go from a weak town administrator to a strong town administrator. And also, there was a great deal of discussion of concerns over the police department, and the town quickly divided into two camps. Those who fully supported the police chief, those who didn't. Now, one of the interesting things in this job is I'm your instrument. I do what you, for the most part, you know, unless it's statutorily mine, I do what you ask of me, and I hope that the board stands behind me. And I've been very lucky, except in, well, one case, the board did stand behind me, about eight miles behind me. But Boxborough, just that FBI investigation, the whole personal relationships within the community, we'd have a staff meeting, and I had someone sitting in the staff meeting who would actually text out everything that was going on in the staff meeting. That was very challenging. But I, three out of four, I don't think, on the interim side, I don't think three out of four is a bad record.
What would you say are the most important qualities that someone should possess to become an effective interim town manager? And which qualities are those that we, as a select board, you would advise to avoid people who had these qualities?
Well, I saw my old friend Charlie Blanchard leaving, and he and I are the kinds of people you want. You don't want somebody who also wants to apply for the job. That is a recipe. It can really foul the recruitment pool. There was a town down towards the Cape where the interim town manager became well-known and was going to apply for the job. They got 11 applications. And the select board then rejected them all because they said, because people knew person X was going to be a candidate or thought he was, they just didn't bother applying. So I think that a guy like Charlie or myself fits that mold. Next, you need somebody who's a very quick earner. You know, I don't have four months to figure out who's who, what's going on. So you need somebody who's a very quick study. I think I've shown that. You need somebody who I think is a generalist, because once again, your town manager isn't going to have time to learn everything, discipline-specific. I'm not sure her counsel is for you or the auditors. And I think you need somebody who's got a good sense of humor, because you gotta roll with the punches, especially, you know. I had one department head tell me, "You're only here six months. I've been here 22 years." Well, okay, great, you know, but you still have to respect the role that I'm fulfilling. As I see it, quick study and a strong grasp of finances are the two most important elements to leave you in good standing.
Of all the jobs, as I asked the last candidate, same thing, you're not in this job for this long a resume without having your critics. So I would ask you, what would your critics say your weaknesses are, and how have you responded to them in those cases? And then what would you say your own, what you feel your own weaknesses are that would need strengthening?
I had a deputy commissioner one time who explained to the commissioner, you know, "We don't ask Carter how he gets things done, we just tell him what we want done, he goes and gets it done, does it." Sometimes people want more involvement, especially board members. I'm more of a chain-of-command kind of, if you will, approach. Tell me what you want done, we'll keep you appraised and move forward. I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
What would your critics say that your weaknesses are in the past? And how would you have you respond, or how would you respond to those?
Yeah, in two towns, they would tell you I didn't consult them enough. You know, I should come to them. Why didn't I ask about this? You know, I went ahead and did my job. They would also tell you that at times, they might tell you, I will tell you, that I don't necessarily suffer fools lightly. When someone comes in and the subject matter is one that's been discussed ad nauseam, around the sixth time that Mr. Harvey comes in and I welcome into the office, "What can I do for you today, Mr. Harvey? Mr. Harvey, we've been over, I've given you all the documents, we've been over this six times." You know, or Mrs. Faustine, "What can I do for you this morning, Mrs. Faustine? How can I help you this morning?" "Well, you haven't helped me so far." You know, it's, I do my very, very best to be polite to people, even if I've got a meeting, bang, 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 to make sure I take them into the office for a few minutes. I've only got a few minutes. Let me get a sense of what your concern is, and then can we set up some time to talk? My temper's gotten less Italian over time. I'm much calmer, especially if you catch me just coming off the lake in my kayak. I have my pluses, I have my minuses, but I think that most people would tell you that on balance, I've done a heck of a job for them.
And last question, and well, let me just follow up on that one. What would you say of yourself that is your, one of your weaknesses that you recognize in you?
I'm not a good file clerk. Oh, lordy. You know, in fact, you know, my desk just looks like a mess. And in one town, I actually said to them, you know, "If what you wanted was a file clerk, you should have hired one," to which they said, "Put one in the budget." And we did, we put a halftime, you know, clerk out in the main pool, if you will, and their job was to try to make sure Carter always looked neat and presentable. You know, I do make typos and such when I'm typing things up. I'm not necessarily the greatest proofreader in the world. Dictation programs have helped me quite a bit with that. You know, I come from the day when girls went to typing, no offense, and we went to woodshop. You know, I just never learned good keyboarding skills.
Okay. And last question is, I think you've already answered it, but I'm going to ask it. Of the two sides of the job, the financial side, the administrative side, which one do you think you're strongest in?
Anything that creates the challenge. What's the challenge of the moment? Okay, we'll do option A, we'll do option B, we'll do option C. Anything that requires a little bit of creativity. I really like the financial side because the single most important thing that we do for our taxpayers is we properly appraise money, we properly collect it, we properly account for it, and we can tell them what they're getting for their money. So I really, really like the finance, but on the planning, everything else, the grants, I really enjoy that as well. Truthfully, I'd say it's like 50/50, maybe a little stronger on the finance, only because that's what my MBA says I'm supposed to be.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for being here.
My pleasure.
We do have at least one open current contract. Can you talk about your experience with negotiating any past union contracts that you've had to deal with?
The representative mass cops will tell you that I'm tough but fair. The firefighters in one community will tell you, "They always used to get it settled by town meeting, and we just, we just couldn't get him to get it done." Well, it wasn't that I couldn't get it done, it was I couldn't get an agreement that I thought was fair to the community. I do think that if you, whether you've talked with the laborers in Spencer or Templeton or the police union, for the most part, other than firefighters in Boxborough, I think you would find that I was sensitive to their needs, especially in those communities where they were way behind the eight ball. And that's tough, to convince your board. Well, yeah, I know cost of living was whatever last year, but these folks are already 12% behind where they need to be. And if you think recruitment is expensive, try forcing these folks, not forcing, but causing them to want to go someplace else. Your open contract is with your DPW, I believe, and I believe if I understood correctly, there's a matter of representation pending, and I'm not sure who they're looking, you know, the to and fro, who they're coming from to maybe go to. I don't rush it. It takes time. If it gets settled, awesome. If it doesn't, we'll just keep working to try to get you a better deal. Now, one of the things you'll have to think about is, I'm not sure, the timeline for that representation issue. Normally, counsel's not involved when I do negotiations until the very end. You may want, depending upon where you are in the management search, rather than, you know, trying to pass the baton and maybe dropping it, you may want to look at whether or not you say to the union, "Look, our new guy's already signed, we got a contract, he's going to be here in 60 days. We know this is an imposition on you, but it really makes some sense to wait rather than have this person get started and then have him to do the handoff." That is timing, you're going to have to wait and see how that plays out.
Thank you. You talked briefly about having, you know, having residents come in and making the time for them, and I'm sure you've handled residents that have been unhappy in the past. Can you talk about how you would handle a resident that has a complaint, especially one that doesn't like the answer that they've been given?
Well, first, let's hear out exactly what their complaint is. And then my, one of my police chiefs thought I was absolutely nuts, but I would say to people, "Okay, not trying to be sarcastic, but let me give you the magic wand. What would you do? If you had control of this situation, what is it you would like me to do? What would you like to see happen?" And you know, sometimes it's so simple, you just say, "Okay," and they're going, "Oh." Sometimes it's not. You need to talk with the department head. Sometimes you do find a solution. We had an instance in one community where the person didn't like the new traffic pattern. It was a little, we, in return for them not suing us, we put up a $2500 fence for Should we have? Probably not. Was it cheaper than paying the lawyers if they sued us? Was it a lot easier than dealing with them coming into the select board every other week? Yeah. So we look for some, we look to see. So we look for some, we look to see, you know, what's the issue? What is it they'd like to see happen? What can we get done? And then after that, you do as much as you can. The important thing is that you listen and they feel that they've been heard and that we recognize, we'll do everything we can, but we can't make everyone happy. Mr. Alonso may remember, Silvio O'Conti, state congressman from the area, once said that he started every election with one-third of the people against him. That's just the way it is. But there's no reason we can't try to make two-thirds of the people happy, if we can get there legal and thoughtfully.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for being here. It's clear that you've watched several of our meetings. May I ask, how many?
I honestly don't remember. I've gone back a few.
Okay. Can you talk to me about your human service, human resources experience, specifically as it relates to hiring, onboarding, team building, and culture?
Okay. In terms of hiring, some of my folks don't like it, but I do make them use the exact same questions for everybody, a discussion you had just last evening, I believe. And we have a scoring system for that. Think mini civil service, if you will. And I do have some questions I require everybody to ask. Tell me about your biggest mistake. Yeah. What did you learn from it? Tell us about your biggest positive. What did you learn from it? Tell me about your best customer service kind of thing. And then, once that's done, they tally them all up and they tell me who they wanna hire. Now, if department head or something else, then I do the top three. And, you know, it doesn't have to be the top scorer. In one community, the director of nursing said, she's the top scorer, but I kill her. I can't stand anybody that's that perky. The DPW director said, he's not the top scorer, but he's been a UPS driver in this town for 20-plus years, and I won't have to teach him, you know, where Shirley Road is, where the old Whalen Park is, you know, I won't have to teach him all these things. And that's, that's six months worth of, okay, okay. So that's the hiring process, and I make sure all new employees that I appoint are brought in, introduced to the select board. It's a standing agenda item, so you can connect face to person. In terms of onboarding, I don't know where the towns are with it, but in each of the towns, as I was leaving, Templeton in particular, had them develop a specific onboarding package along with some training videos, the ethics, obviously, anti-harassment, some videos that I thought were sensitive to race relations and just getting along with people, you know, the Irish. I worked in one town where there was the French church and the Irish church, and they were literally back-to-back, you know, kind of thing, and there was the French fire station and no more than two blocks away was the Irish fire station. So, you know, we're a country in which we're constantly churning in new people, new ethnicities, new cultural habits. You know, the biggest challenge for me frankly is, if I say something, let me use it, let me say I talk about Andy Griffith, you know, nobody knows who the heck I'm talking about. You know, so that, that age gap is tough, especially for my managers. And the third part, and I'm sorry, was...
Yep, the other parts was onboarding, you already answered it, team building and culture.
So, you know, the, the culture we try to work with in terms of requiring those teams, we do it as staff, and then we'll say, this issue came up, I need you, you, and you to work on this. And we mix that up a little bit. The cultural part is tough because of the age differential. I think that has been, in my experience, they just don't work like they used to. You know, that has been the toughest piece. I was standing in line yesterday to go someplace, and the guy in front of me says to the young lady, 16, 17, 18, you know, you really should count the cash back. And she's, oh, the computer says you got $6.19. And I'd bought a bottle of water for $1.19, and she said, did you know your change is $1.61? Gave her a $5 bill, the water was $1.19, and she says, you know, you got $1.61 coming? I said, no, I got $3.81 coming. She's, oh, okay, that makes more sense. So I have found the toughest thing in my experience, and as I've gotten older, I think it's become tougher, has been working with the age gap and the cultural issues that come with that age gap. Phones 24/7, those are the kind that I personally, going back to my weakness, I probably have the, I probably have some challenges there.
All right. Understandable. You know, I'm not, I'm not on social media, so I'm not always, I feel like...
I went on Facebook so I could try to track what my son was doing.
So if selected, you're not gonna be a subject matter expert in departments that you will manage, but your department heads are subject matter experts who will know a lot more than you about their departments. So please share your approach to managing department heads and whether you have employed a command team approach.
Well, first, with due respect, I may be a better subject matter expert in some areas than some of your department heads. You know, when we were looking at a bridge project, because of my experience in construction and working for an engineering firm for two years, I was able to talk about different methods of construction, and my DPW director was like, oh, okay. You know, now, I know enough to keep them on the straight and narrow, and I do, for the most part, try to leave department heads alone. Go ahead and do your job, but did you think about this? Did you think about this? Did you think about this? And often, you know, they're so focused that what they don't understand is it is our responsibility that when we make a presentation on something, and let's say it's a bridge replacement, and you've just read about, you know, the I-93 bridges that were replaced overnight because they built all the panels ahead of time, they shut the lanes, pulled the panels out, and dropped the new ones in, and you say, what did you ever think of that? I don't wanna be sitting here saying, no. I wanna be sitting here saying, yes, we did, and here's why, we discounted it. And so a lot of department heads, because they know the answer, they go zeroing right in, and they kind of forget all of the other things that maybe a citizen, a board member, a finance committee member might ask about, so we can be fully prepared and look like we actually know what we're talking about.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Carter. Do you have any questions for us?
I guess my biggest question, you have a charter, so that's nice, that outlines responsibilities. I've worked in towns where it's either completely nebulous or you have a job description that the board can yank at any moment in time. What is your hopes and aspirations in terms of how quickly you think you can get it filled and what you're looking for in fit? Because I may be technically skilled, but Charlie might be a better fit. He's a good guy. Not that I'm not a good guy, too. But fit can be an extremely important part of the equation. In fact, it often can be more important to the success of an individual than the technical skills they might bring. I had a, you know, an engineer one time I fired, and the guy I hired was not a certified engineer, he was a clerk of the works. I said, well, yeah, but you go over to the contractor and say, you didn't do this, you didn't do this, you get out your transit, you start measuring everything. Steve goes over, well, Chuck, looks like about this, looks like about this, looks like you took out about 15 cubic yards. Does that sound right to you? Yep, okay. Chuck's happy, Steve's happy, job goes forward, guess what? Two other items come along that Chuck doesn't charge me for because he's got a good working relationship. Kurt, they thought should be, you know, put in the pit first before they backfilled. So fit is extremely important, and how would you describe the local culture here in your organization and what you're looking for? I guess, I guess that's my question, because even short-termers wanna be successful.
So at least in terms of like priorities that I'm looking for, I'm just looking for someone, an interim town manager role, who can really help us get through special town meeting. So that's really on my mind, that can help us make sure that, like you mentioned, the ARPA funds are allocated, and I also am looking for someone with a really strong people and leadership skills that can really work well with elected boards and also staff as well.
So local culture-wise, I mean, Lunenburg is a growing community. You know, you're always, as you know, gonna have members of the community who are upset about things, who want certain things, and then other members who think that everything's going great. You know, my primary concern is, I don't think that we are an excellent employer. I would not want to, I don't think that if I was an employer of the town, I think I would be standing in front of the select board often with complaints. And I'm being honest. And I think that we haven't, as a board, focused enough on our employees. I think that we focus mostly on the town manager. And there's far more below that, and having a workforce that feels valued, I think there are many things you said tonight and that Charlie said that just resonated, which is, you know, making sure employees feel valued. I think that time out of the office, showing up at shift changes, showing up during major snow removal events, those things go a long way. And so, you know, a stronger manager in the sense of people, interacting with people, displaying that care for people, and I think that that is ultimately what I would like for us to start working on transitioning toward, is really policy creation during this interim period of, once we have this full-time role filled, of how we can be better aligned with ensuring that the town manager that reports to us, that is more of a 360 view. Right now, everything in our own structure is funneled through a lens, and we don't really get the big picture. So I think that, you know, fit matters a lot, I agree with you, but, but for me personally, without any indictment of anyone else, I'm looking for a strong manager, someone who's gonna be out in the field, interacting, observing things for themselves, that's where I think we really need the town manager, spit energy in addition to all the core functions of the job.
I would agree. My sentiments are very similar to my colleagues. I have a unique perspective because I did work for the town for 12 years, I just transitioned out. I think that a lot of times, our staff doesn't feel heard by upper management and by the board, so I think having those conversations, even, you know, with department heads and how they can involve their staff to feel appreciated, how that gets back to us, is something that I'm very, I'm very interested in.
I would say that the, having lived through two interim town managers already in town, that the most important part is the turbulence that are caused by the departure of a town manager, for whatever reason. I look to the interim to calm those waters and keep the boat in the right direction. I don't look for them to do very extreme course corrections, just keep it straight until they know that they are a bridge person getting to the person, the permanent position. So that means they need to work, what you said about being a quick learner is obviously critical, and being good with people to ensure people that, hey, the boat is under control and what we're gonna get is to the next port to get the permanent captain. I'm temporary captain, I just wanna get to that port, and we don't do any side trips, and we don't do anything special and anything drastic, we just go in that direction to get to the permanent person. That's what I'm looking for.
And I share a lot of the same thoughts. With the interim position, there's potential to have no overlap with our current town manager. So I'm looking for, you know, I'm a worrywart. I don't want things to fall through the cracks. I want as smooth, keep things as smooth and as possible during the transition. We have had a lot of turnover in staff. Some of that is because of retirement, some of it's for other reasons, people left for other positions for whatever reason. So a lot of people have been asked to do a lot more things. That places a stress on people, so being able to, it's, you know, it's like running a two-minute drill. It's a two-minute drill for a reason. You can't run a two-minute drill for a full half. And building the morale among the staff who are trying to take on extra, extra work. And then there's also the practical side. I'm thinking, yes, can we find a permanent town manager in three months? Probably not. I don't know. So I'm looking, you know, if we go, end up going six months, that budget season starts. And it's not an excuse, well, we didn't have a full-time town manager. I wanna, you know, keep it, keep things going and not miss a beat and have nothing fall through the cracks.
Each community I stepped into did not have the town manager when I stepped into it. They'd either resigned and gone or they'd been terminated. The budget in Grafton, I had to do it, and then I handed it off. What I did, once they knew who their incoming TM might be, he had a 60-day notice, if I recall, because I'd call and try out ideas and say, you know, at the end of the day, it's my name on the memo, but what do you think about this? What do you think about that? The only thing I would like to comment on is what Mr. Alonso said, because sometimes, as with the Titanic, there's an iceberg out there. In Grafton, they'd passed an override of a million and a half dollars for capital improvements, but they never appropriated the money in the same year. So in year two, when you can increase that by two and a half percent, zero times two and a half is zero. And I had to be the one to break that news to them. So sometimes there are icebergs, you try to work your way around them as quickly as you can, and the biggest part of that struggle, they had one other iceberg. The biggest part of that was convincing people it truly was a problem. Well, that can't be right. Well, yeah, you know, it is. Is there anything else I might add, Mr.?
Do you have any other questions?
I do not, sir.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming in tonight, Carter.
It's been my pleasure to be back here in North Central. I'm headed over to Templeton to see some friends for the rest of the evening.
I was gonna make some comment that you brought an MGL, the whole MGL book with you.
Actually, it's The Bully Pulpit by Doris Kearns Goodwin.
Oh, excellent.
Teddy Roosevelt and McKinley and their comparison, and I really wish that people who write these books would do organizational charts of all these different families, so I can keep track of everything. Thank you so much, folks. Best wishes.
Very nice to meet you.
It was a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's discuss in no particular order. You know, what do you guys think of the candidates and their strengths, weaknesses? Any preferences that stand out?
Well, the first question before I do that is, I haven't seen an agenda for this meeting, so I don't know what it is, so it's...
It's just interviews for...
First of all, are we having other interviews?
I'm sorry, what?
Are we having other interviews?
We are not.
Okay, so this is it.
Unless we, of course, think that we need to, but...
Right. If we wanna move on with other candidates?
Well, I would just ask, because it was up in the air, and that's why, as of yesterday night, it was up in the air if we were meeting anybody else. I thought there were other calls to people.
No, Julie sent out the schedule in an email.
For tonight, right.
For tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
I also wasn't clear if there was a Friday night or next week.
Oh, she did mention in that email that she wasn't scheduling anyone else for the time being, but...
So how do we wanna approach?
I mean, we could just have an open discussion right now.
So if we think about like timing-wise, you know, with the town, current town manager, we have two weeks left, you know, basically eight business days, eight days in office, I would expect that from the initial introduction, onboarding material...
I would expect that from the initial introduction, onboarding materials, you know, walking around, meeting everyone, I mean, that's already two, three days right there. So, if we move quickly and make a determination sooner, that gives us time to do reference checks, and then try to get someone started potentially as early as next Tuesday or so. And then, that would give them basically, you know, a week and a half to work alongside with Heather.
Well, getting references, I mean, first of all, I would say that I think both candidates were excellent. I don't think we can make a bad decision for the interim from the two candidates. I would like to, I would like to get the references and talk to some of the references, or have somebody on the board, I mean, not everybody, we don't want five people calling the same people. But getting a reference check, at least spotty one, I mean, Mr. Terenzini gave us a list of 12 people.
We don't have any.
Are you saying, Mr. Alonso, that you'd like to hear the results of the references before we meet again to identify kind of a lead candidate, or?
Well, I mean, that, that would be, again, I am sensitive to the time constraint. That would be the normal thing to do, because again, I would like to, on some of the candidates, I did do Google searches and references, and I knew about the FBI case that Mr. Terenzini was mentioning in Boxborough, because I found it online and, you know, I would like to do that, just to make sure that we're not getting anything, getting into anything that we should know about. So, I mean, we could certainly talk about the candidates, again, I don't think there was a wide discrepancy between the two of them, probably more stylistic than anything. Certainly, experientially, they have kind of parallel backgrounds.
What happens if we don't decide tonight? Because we don't meet again for, all of us, for, is it three weeks before we're all together again?
More than that, because I think Caesar's not here the first meeting in August, so, I mean, you know, August 13th is the next time all five of us will be here. So, I, I think, you know, we got to move kind of quickly. My input, I'll just go ahead and offer it, I agree with Mr. Alonso that both candidates are eminently qualified, I think I lean towards, more towards Mr. Terenzini and his style.
What if we had a lead candidate pending reference checks? Just for, just for the lead, if we agree on a lead candidate, would that help to expedite?
I don't see, again, because of my initial statement, I don't think it would hurt, but before we offered somebody, I'd like somebody to have done a reference check, so, yes.
That is, yeah, standard. I'd be, I mean, I have a lead candidate.
Who's your lead candidate?
Mr. Terenzini.
Same, yeah.
One question I have, and I meant to follow up at one point, he mentioned three days on-site, no hour limitation. Is that?
I just interpret that as availability was a little flexible.
He doesn't have the retirement hour limit?
Yeah, it looks like he retired out of New Hampshire, so it's probably different.
Yeah, it might be different.
Right.
Okay.
He did mention it, and I would assume, he seems like the person, kind of person who would mention it.
Because I am concerned about just 20 to 24 hours, or even if, I don't know, I...
I had that same, that same thought process of the 24. I think both candidates were great, and I'm sure we would be in capable hands either way, but I, I do lean towards, I did like Mr. Terenzini's style, but I think not having that same limitation on hours with everything that we have going on, and especially with our staff turnover, I think it's important to have someone here more frequently, you know, as many hours as we can get someone here, honestly, especially with knowing how many hours Heather has committed to this job regularly, going from someone who's working 60 hours to having someone who's on-site 16 is going to be a culture shock for our staff that is already under a lot of pressure.
Tom, do you have a lead candidate?
Yes, I would say Mr. Terenzini would be my lead candidate, slightly, but yes, he would still be the lead.
All right, well, sounds like we're all on the same page, then.
So, what are the next steps? I think the reference checks are vital, but I...
I think Julie should conduct those, and if she wants to put it all in a report for us, then that's probably an option. I don't know, we should be conducting reference checks instead of Julie.
Tom, in previous searches, is it something that select board members have done before, or is it?
Yes. Well, first of all, there was no role such as Julie's before, but since it is the select board appointment, just like I wouldn't want to have somebody else do the interviews for me, I wouldn't want somebody to, I mean, if we want to have her check as a second, as a second check, but we divide them, and somebody on the board, you know, calls some of the people, and she calls some, I don't mind dividing it, but a board member or members, again, we could each, we could have two or three people call a person and get in touch with them. I mean, I don't think you have to call more than, let's say, four people, and they should all be from different towns and all different roles. And he's given us, he's given, yeah, he's given us enough to choose from.
Well, I mean, so, his last role was in, we had Boxborough, Grafton, Templeton, and then last full-time was Moltenboro, so maybe that would be the target?
So, I mean, I could offer, I'll just, the first on the list, Boxborough, I'll be willing to try to call Mr., the former chair there of the planning board.
All right.
Somebody else wants to take one, and we can give Julie two or something.
I can take Ray Mead from Grafton, the former town moderator, and then the next one from Templeton is Mr. Michael Curry. So, do we want to call four in total and then have Julie do the other two?
Sure, I can call Mr. Curry.
Well, that would be...
I don't think, yeah.
We don't need, okay, got it. So, just you two are going to call?
Yeah.
Got it.
So, who's going to call, Mr. Curry?
I mean, we, we can also, I mean, not task it to Julie and task it to ourselves.
That's fine.
And then, just send Julie the results for her to roll up for us, if there's time enough in tomorrow's calendar.
I know, we want to get this done as soon as possible, right? I don't know.
Well, the, well, the, the last part of the role is going to be negotiations and getting to a contract, so, we can't, can't overplay or underplay that, who knows? We don't know what they're asking.
Yep.
I mean, they've both done their due diligence, so they certainly know what we're paying, you know, so. And it was mentioned at last night's meeting, what is left in the budget item, the line item, and in reserve, so, again, those, these are sharp individuals, they know what they're dealing with, so I got to believe we'll be able to come to an agreement, I would imagine. But we have to, that's what Julie should do, she should draw up an agreement and look at what our other, our last interim town manager agreement was and modify it to meet this one, with the new dates and new salaries and some of the other things. That's what I would ask that she do.
All right. Then maybe we should reach out to more people ourselves, then, and for the reference checks, I think you were about to say something, Amanda.
No, I just think that's a good idea to have Julie draft the agreement.
Yeah, but for reference checks, do we want to keep going down the list of who's going to take who? I can try reaching out to Michael Curry.
Okay.
And then Kevin Quinlan in Moltenboro, does someone want to reach out to him?
Well, now, we have, those are three select board members, do we have maybe the town council?
Well, the first one is in select board, first one's planning board.
Right.
And then, two select board members.
I don't see any staff people.
No?
But Moltenburg was the last kind of full-time role, so I feel like that might be something important.
Okay, I can call Mr. Quinlan.
I think four should be more than enough.
Might as well all do one if we're all going to call.
Well, I don't want to speak for people's time, but we only got two days.
Whatever.
And hopefully, none of these people are on vacation, which, again, is a real toss-up because it's July, and it's Thursday and Friday.
That's true. So, of the remaining references, which one would we want? One of the, either the audit or the town council?
You know what, the last two, I think, are not good. I mean, I don't want to talk to town council.
We already have Grafton, so Spencer, so...
So, I would say maybe Spencer would be the one, yeah.
So, we call?
You can call them.
And then, I think, how many realistically save one of them doesn't call back, are we going to hold this up, or how many do we want to get responses? I'm going to do Moltenboro.
Okay.
I would say at least...
At least three?
At least three by the afternoon tomorrow.
Okay.
I just don't want to be held to getting, I just don't want to be held to getting all five responses, because we probably...
No, 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 no. So, whenever anybody does it, we have to...
Let the chair know.
So, what are we looking for? Are we looking, it sounds like we've chosen a first choice, that seems what we've done, and we probably should make it official. But with that, in order not to hold it up, and because we can't really share information, the only thing we can share is that there's, you know, they check out fine, we could share that info, because we're not deliberating, just so we don't hold up everything. But I don't think the whole board wants a report unless there's something that one of us turns up and says, "Okay, everybody should know this," then we have to have a meeting.
Right.
But if everybody says, "Oh, this one checks out fine, this one checks out fine," there's nothing really to talk of, you know, then we can indicate that.
All right. So, then Julie's then going to work on this agreement, or we'll ask Julie to work on the agreement, and then if we confirm, how are we going to approach salary negotiation with this gentleman? We already have the range, but I would assume that it may want to be, who's done, I don't know if that's, what do we think? My opinion is, I think that maybe it might be one of us who've had salary negotiations before, or, you know, or we can ask Julie what her comfort level is doing that for this role.
Well, I mean, we could ask, first of all, we could say that you're a primary, and if you, now we're up to the point, you saw, if you saw the meeting, you saw what our numbers are, what are you looking for? Because, you know, again, can't get blood from a stone, if we don't have the money in the budget, then, so I got to believe that they know this in advance, and get, try to get a number first, and then work from there.
So, if Julie reaches out tomorrow and asks for salary requirements, and then also provides us with a draft agreement, we need to meet again, though, to vote on it?
Well, that's going to have to happen anyway. I mean, there has to be a meeting to vote on it, there's no doubt, and so...
Are you, I know you have a vacation.
We have a, yeah, well, I'm on way next week. I mean, if we have a meeting in this, you know, next week, and I have to do it remotely, and it's just for that purpose, then, fine, I'll do that, you know, I just don't want to have to sit through a three-hour meeting just to get to that on my vacation, but I'm willing to join a meeting that's an hour long where we discuss it and try to finalize it. I would ask, if we can, I would ask Julie to get, just to prepare, I would ask salary ranges for both of them personally.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
If they'll offer, so.
All right, so I can do that, I'll reach out to her to have her get that agreement and the salary ranges.
Yep.
And then, maybe, Tom, I know, you know, I know it always sucks when you're away from the town, you got to call into a meeting, but maybe we just front-load, you know, I don't know what you think, Caesar, but maybe we could just front-load this topic for like, you know, 6:45 or something, and, you know, or a second meeting at 6:30, and that way, whatever you think your dinner, and we can coordinate with Tom, and what is...
No, I'm willing, I realize the importance of it, and I'm willing to be flexible, let's put it that way.
Okay, yeah, if we're available to do that, then we can just do that at our next meeting.
Yeah, we can text availability.
Yep.
That doesn't have to be an email or a public meeting to text availability for a meeting.
Yeah, so I'll coordinate that, too, so.
And I'm having an, I may be available remotely on Tuesday, depending on how I'm feeling, Tuesday evening, so I may be able to dial in.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we were to do Renee Monday evening, because we could...
Monday, we have budget task force.
Got it, thanks.
Sorry, we can, we can find a time.
Yeah.
Is there anything else we want to discuss tonight?
So, I, just to make it official, I would make a motion that we say that Mr. Terenzini will be, is our first choice, and Mr. Blanchard the second choice of the two interviews.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. All right, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Oh, before, before, one more thing.
Go ahead.
Well, maybe it's premature. I was going to say, maybe we should, we should get from Mr. Blanchard the list of references, since we're, since we're asking if he will provide them.
Yeah, I'll ask Julie.
And just as a backup in case, it's good, they're both very qualified, I want to be clear, because I'm sure they're going to go home and watch this.
Yeah.
I agree.
They're both very qualified, and I want to be prepared for both, for either one of them, and that would be a good preparation, at least, if we can.
I agree, and I think the town will be in good hands either way.
Yep, I concur.
Here, here, all right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is 8:05 PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you for tuning in.
Thanks. All right.